I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there's anyone present who is also recording this meeting.
No one else is recording the meeting.
Let the minutes reflect that no one else has indicated that they are recording this meeting, or if someone is recording, please identify yourself for the minutes. All right, public comment? See any hands?
Yeah, no hands raised for public comments.
All right, consent agenda. Warren? AP 2234, AP 2234, I'm sorry, AP 22324S, AP 2323S, AP 2323, minutes from February 17th, 2021, March 17th, 2021, August 18th, 2021, September 1st, 2021, September 15th, 2021, September 29th, 2021, October 27th, 2021, November 3rd, 2021. The ambulance contract extension with action, ambulance, the appointment of Megan Rowland, who is here, and a common vicular's license for Latino cuisine continued upon the issuing of food permit. Would you like to say anything, Megan?
Sure. Hello, good evening. This is very, very light. My name's Megan Rowland. I'm a new Hadley resident. My family and I moved here in mid-June of this year, coming from Deerfield, and I have applied to be a part of the Hadley Diversity Equity and Inclusion Group, and continue my interest in supporting communities to be as inclusive and equitable as possible. I'm a clinical social worker. I'm also going to be teaching at UMass this winter, and so it's part of my belief in trying to serve communities that I'm a part of, and to support vulnerable populations, and to be part of groups of folks that want to continue to make communities better places to live for all people and all families. And as a newcomer to Hadley, right now, I'm just wanting to learn more about this great community. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, and thank you for your volunteer. All right, they have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, we have, we have remote. All right, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, old business, license renewals. Jennifer?
Yes, so this is the last batch of the year, four renewals. All of the licenses are correct. All of these are paid, and I would ask you to approve them. We do have eight outstanding that I will assist in getting their permits in for the new year, and if I fail in my assisting, I will ask all to assist on the January 4th meeting. But so far, so good, and I'm feeling really great about only eight outstanding.
Well done.
I thought I was going to get them all, but some people are a little tricky coming in, so if I could ask for y'all to approve them, I would appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go tab by tab again?
Please.
Okay. Motion to approve the alcohol licenses is presented.
Second? Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the common vic, well, yes. Motion to approve the common vic licenses is presented.
Second.
May I?
Yes.
Just, I would like y'all to recognize that you are issuing a license for Latino cuisine that you just voted on for said license, so it's a tandem, just so that you're aware.
Thank you.
And you have a second, so roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve theater skating rink licenses presented.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Roll call, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Class 1 and Class 2 licenses as presented.
Hello? I can, I can second this, I'm not involved in any of these, so I'll second it.
And roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion to approve entertainment licenses as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you. And may I bring up one more thing about the licenses? So I've received quite a few phone calls from some of our smaller businesses about the plastic bag bylaw that the union placed on January 1st. I've encouraged them all to go to the Board of Health for the permit, and as I understand, there's going to be a public hearing on the night, and so I'm going to try to get with Amy, or excuse me, not Amy, Emma Dragon, to get that to my licensees, but there are several, we're a very welcoming community, we have a lot of people here, small businesses, and not everyone who owns a business in the town's first language is English, and they are struggling a lot with this. And I just, I am really concerned about how we're going to support them and make sure that things are clear and easy for everyone to understand. That's just one of the concerns that I've had. Good people calling me, but then I have other businesses that are just terrified about this because of roof nine, and the fact that their business is suffering so much because of the construction already. And I just, I do want to make y'all aware of that, that the phone is ringing pretty consistently. No one, however, wants to leave their name or number because they are worried that they'll be considered a troubled business. And I assure them that they wouldn't, y'all would never feel that way about any of our businesses, and that you're always here to hear them, but that is, that is what I'm getting. No one wants to go on the record with complaining, but they're happy to call and talk to me.
Okay.
Sure, and I've heard from people who have thousands of dollars' worth of items that won't qualify for this, and they don't want to throw it out again for the reasons you're talking about, so I think there's plenty of reason to allow some kind of leeway here.
Well, and the Board of Health knows that, and that's why the bylaw was written, as it is.
Yeah.
If people have concerns about it, they should please talk to Board of Health. The town is very business-friendly, and we are just, in the long run, working to have plastic reduction in our town.
Thank you for allowing me to speak about that.
Sure, you're welcome. All right, Econolodge, Laura, you want to come sit at a microphone, please?
Good evening. My name is Laura Baker, Real Estate Development Director for Valley Community Development Corporation, and I'm joined tonight by Alexis Breitniker.
I don't think you're on.
Is your green light on?
I don't know.
Guess I should talk. Oh, I do have one.
How's that?
No.
Sounds the same.
Sounds the same.
You might just have to speak up for us in the room. Should I try that?
It should be good now.
Okay. So, good evening, I'm Laura Baker, Real Estate Development Director for Valley Community Development, and I'm joined tonight by Alexis Breitniker, who is our executive director. And primarily, we wanted to come in tonight just to give you an update, make sure you know what's happening with the plan to convert Econolodge to housing. We are moving toward acquisition of the property. We, at this time, anticipate taking title in the first week of January, so quite soon. We had applied for what's called a project eligibility letter from the state. You may remember, you provided a letter of support for that, and we anticipate getting that letter back from the state, really, I was hoping by the end of the year, so, but very soon. Once we have that, our next action would be to put in a zoning application through the Zoning Board of Appeals, and so that will kind of be our next kind of venture into the public arena. We've had a couple of inquiries from people knowing that we're going to acquire the hotel, and that we will have a holding period until we're ready to renovate it and, and turn it into housing, about short-term leases, and I just wanted to see if there are any concerns or questions about that, if we decided to go down that road. One of the inquiries is from someone who would like to do overflow homeless shelter for three months. I especially wanted to make sure to talk with you first, because I know we've talked a lot about the difference between homeless shelter and permanent supportive housing, so I didn't want to muddy the waters and create confusion about what our plan was if we did end up in a short-term lease situation. So it's really just to kind of see what people think about that, if there's any concerns about that. I know we have the police chief here tonight, and the highway super, I see, I don't see the fire chief, but, you know, this is a use that had been accommodated at the Econolodge in the past without incident. I've heard some other things about rentals that have taken place since then, so again, I just wanted to be really clear and transparent and make sure there was no confusion if we ended up with a short-term lease situation. Happy to take any questions that you have about the long-term plan for permanent supportive housing, or any of the other things I've talked about. Randy?
Have you been to the planning board and talked to them about the short-term lease situation?
Nope. You are the first ones that we've broached it with, and again, we're not committed to do it, but I can see that, you know, we don't really want to have a vacant hotel, and that there's a lot of need. So we put those two things together, and we can kind of see the writing on the wall that we'll have, you know, we'll have inquiries about it.
Sure.
But no, we haven't.
So my concern would be the, it sounds like it's something that's been used in the hotel situation before, so it's basically a hotel use which is allowed.
Yep.
My only concern is that it's something that is not allowed, and the fine lines, and I don't know what they are.
Right.
That's why I would like to see you talk to the planning board.
When other hotels have been used for homeless shelters in this town, what process did they use to do that?
I don't have, I wouldn't have that information. I can get it from, but.
I don't think, I think they just did it, sort of. So Laura's being kind enough to come to us in advance, which we appreciate, always knowing what's going on, but I do think that Randy's idea of talking to the planning board would be useful.
When you say, "short-term lease," Laura, what's the timeframe that you're looking at?
So the most critical months are the cold months.
Yes.
So there is interest in, from January to March, having an overflow capacity, so that if other shelters, sadly, this year, the shelters are, are full, and so people are not having a place to sleep overnight, they're outside, and so a place to direct people, if a shelter reached capacity, they could send folks, so they wouldn't be outside. We would make sure, as landlords, that it was a fully-staffed 24/7 situation for a use like that. And it probably wouldn't, it wouldn't be the whole hotel, it would be a portion of it, which is how it was used in the past, it was just the first floor.
I see Bill Dwyer, ready to speak.
Hi, Bill.
Hello. I do want to just suggest here, I should be audible. Okay, I am unmuted.
Bill still can't hear you. Still can't.
Try somebody.
Everybody looks frozen.
See if you can get somebody else to talk, and see if they're, if it works.
Amy, can you speak?
They're all frozen. They're not frozen.
Yeah, we're having issues with sharing.
Hold on a minute, folks.
Yeah, it just, second time in its head, it's going to. I apologize. I'm not getting it down.
Oh, Warren.
All right, Bill.
I have no issues with this individually or as a planning board member, except to say it hasn't come to us.
So, you guys, oh, can you hear him?
What we did discover in the past, and perhaps the building inspector wants to weigh in on it, is when uses are changed, sometimes they change building code requirements and fire code requirements. So it would be important, as important to get the buy-in from the building department and the fire department as it would be from the Select Board. The planning board, obviously, I can't speak on behalf of the planning board.
What changes, the difference between a short-term lease situation and long-term residential use is, one is short-term, and one is residential. We know it's not zoned for residential use. We would absolutely, if this came to pass, check in with Tom Quinlan, the building inspector, the fire chief, and likely the police chief as well. But again, we didn't want to start talking to anyone without just making sure we weren't heading, you know, we don't want anybody to think we're doing kind of a bait-and-switch. We said it wouldn't be a homeless shelter, now suddenly it is, so we just want to be mindful of that and make sure we're clear what's happening, and see if you had any questions or concerns.
I see DeeDee on. Are you going to speak, DeeDee?
Um, but as Bill said, you know, there are concerns as far as fire also, too, because it is a little different, and they do sometimes get more calls, things like that, the same with the police. So I think kind of that is a little more of our concerns than anything else, it's more of a safety issue.
Okay, well, I don't want to take up more of your time than.
Anyone else have any questions for Laura?
Great.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
Thank you, you too.
All right. We have an abatement request for Algonquin Drive. Scott, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would like to recommend that the board grant this abatement.
Audience, Scott, I'm just looking at, well, it's actually the letter that Jennifer, Jennifer put in here, and she's indicating that it's a very unusual situation, and it has to do with the swapping out of the meter, correct? And that's why you're recommending that we go ahead and approve this?
Yes. Currently, at this time, we cannot approve the accuracy of the meter. We don't have it. It was, we have part of the meter, not the whole thing. Part of it was just misplaced and, I think, removed from the building, so we cannot test the meter, and that, that is our problem. We cannot prove the accuracy.
Time, the answer's no, so I thought we should, would want to explain to people why this was a unique circumstance.
Yes, yes, Molly, that is correct. Most of the time, the answer is no, but in this situation, we just can't prove anything at this point.
And asked that we postpone because of the holiday, and that he, actually, I don't want to say, and for other reasons that he did not want to attend this evening, he asked you to postpone until January 18.
Okay, so I talked with that person, and it's relative to all abatement requests, and this is a question for Scott. The gentleman who had the other abatement request wondered if our system would allow, if you noticed excess usage in a given time period, is it possible to notify the property owner, or is that something that's just not possible with the, the technology we have relative to the water meters?
Randy, with the current technology we have, we only would know that information at the time of read, and at the time of read, it gets flagged as a high usage, and the collector's office actually reaches out to the residents to tell them that they have a high read, but, and in between the reads, there is no way for us to know that. Yep.
Do you have a recommendation on this abatement?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Nevinson?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. John O'Leary, the senior planner from the PB PC, has requested, is going to talk to us about the ADA block grant funding for the town.
Hey, good evening, how are you guys? Good. So I apologize, my camera isn't working right now, so I'll just speak this way, hopefully it's good enough. So like, as you mentioned, I'm John O'Leary, I am a senior planner at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and basically, I reached out to Carolyn Brennan, requiring about who she thought might be a good fit for a project committee that's looking to administer an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. So a quick background on this, this project was actually funded through the town's FY21 CDBG grant program, so the town received $37,400 to hire a consultant to perform an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. And just really briefly, the, the plan's essentially going to evaluate all of its municipal-owned buildings and properties, so the plan will provide an evaluation of the town's operations to determine whether or not they are accessible to people with disabilities, and the plan will also identify physical barriers to any public building sites and services owned or operated by the town. So I'm, as the project manager, looking to put together a few members of the community that would like to be part of, or would be a good fit for this committee, before I get underway to procure the consultant. And so that's what I just was here tonight, to see, the Select Board maybe had some any recommendations, or people in town that you thought would be a good fit for this committee.
Haley Wood, who is on the meeting, because she's the director of the Senior Center, and she has done some of this work. Haley?
Hello. Hi, John. Hi, everyone. So yeah, I'm Haley Wood, from the director of the Senior Center, and I feel very supportive of the undertaking of the self-evaluation and transition plan. It's very much in keeping with the goals of the age-friendly and dementia-friendly Hadley Initiative that is well underway, and we have had an active working group working on that for close to a year and a half now, and John, your colleague Becky Bash was the senior planner who assisted us with that. So first of all, I just want to voice my support for the process, and we'll be curious to, to learn more about the, the various steps involved, and I am, will be glad to bring it to our working group, which is comprised of older adult residents in Hadley, staff who work at the Senior Center, and different business owners in town who have taken an interest in the work, and recommend, well, just simply ask them if they might be available to participate in the committee, and I'm curious about the time commitment and, you know, kind of overall meeting schedule plan, and the steps that would happen to implement the plan.
Yeah, I think he dropped out.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Surely, not intentionally.
Can we back in if you want to give him a moment?
Person, this is Mark Dunn. I have, as an architect, I have done these for other towns. I remember doing for the town Swambsk in the North Shore. If I can get my partner's approval, I would put my hat in the ring.
Mark, why don't we go on with the next item in case John comes back?
Okay.
All right. Mike, you want to come take the microphone, please? Acting Sergeant Appointment.
So, thank you for giving me a few moments of your time. The board has heard, you know, some of what the department is going through right now as far as personnel issues go, but I know that the board also likes transparency, and you want the public to understand why you're making the moves. So I'd be asking you for a couple of things in a few moments, but I think the general public may be interested to hear why, sorry, you know, why you're making whatever decision you make. So as many of you know Mike Romano, it's going to be out because he is ill. He will be out for a year or more, and that's if everything goes, you know, well. He is home now, he is, you know, has good days and bad days, but he's, well, he's not stuck in the hospital. We just recently got another officer back after being out with his own medical issue for about a month and a half to two months. Sick time, sick bank for him, the same sick bank that I'll be asking you to switch over to Mike Romano tonight. I have another officer who's been out since the weekend with what he thinks is possibly a broken foot, or at least an injured foot, to the point where he obviously hasn't been able to be at work. I have two officers right now who have COVID, and I have a detective who is investigating three major crimes right now, who's pulling up to be his patrol officer because we just don't have enough patrol officers to control the town. And as I just mentioned to Carolyn a few minutes ago, I am waiting to hear back from the Municipal Police Training Commission, because one of the wonderful new changes with the MPTC and POST is waivers and exemptions, and I found out that I may end up actually having to change the title of two of my full-time police officers to part-time police officer, reduce their hours, thus pulling two more officers out of our full-time ranks for a period of time, just so they can complete the new Bridge Academy, and then put them right back into full-time after they've completed that.
Do you have the governor's phone number?
I wish I do, I wish I did. So I say all of that to say, this board has been very good to our department, this town has been very good to our department, I'm not going to come here and ask for some outrageous request to hire 10 police officers. What I am asking, though, is that we can't continue to operate under these circumstances. Everything except for the situation with Sergeant Romano, we will deal with. It's part and parcel with having a police department with, in this new day and age, with the new MPTC rules and the POST Commission, and all of the different regulations that we're still trying to learn. But what I am going to be requesting is that I would like to promote an acting sergeant to backfill the vacancy left by Mike in the supervisory role, and I'm, I'm also going to be asking the board to allow me to hire a full-time police officer to backfill the vacancy that Mike is going to leave for who knows how long he'll be out. I can tell you that within my budget, I will be able to cover the sergeant promotion, the difference between the patrol officer that I'm recommending and, and the sergeant salver. salary is something that I can handle. Obviously, you know, we're going to have some, we're going to get dinged in a couple of areas, but we'll be able to handle it, you know, with all of these other officers being out and back and forth and everything. You know, it's going to hit some of the overtime lines and things like that. I don't, however, can't tell you that I will have enough money within my budget to cover an entire another salary. I will tell you that I can make reductions in some of my expense lines, and we can do transfers at the end of the budget cycle, but as Molly is probably the only Board member that probably, that was a member of the Board at the time when I was hired, you know, she can probably recall that sometimes in order to save money in some areas and be able to predict, you know, appropriately predict a budget, you have to spend money in other areas. And that's one of the ways that we were able to resolve the overtime problem that, you know, plagued this department for decades. So those are my two requests for this evening. I'd like to, obviously, switch the sick time bank over to Mike Romano, which I think all you have to do is sign. I don't know if you have to actually vote on that now or not, but I'm requesting that those two, that I be allowed to make those two motions immediately.
Any questions?
No. I mean, again, we understand what you're up against. Even more better news tonight, so from the last time we spoke. So I'm sure you have my full support, and I think, so with that said, so I'll make a motion, so if anybody wants to say anything further, motion to...
I'd be requesting...
One of these three pieces.
So the three pieces would be to switch the sick time bank over to, from James Ryan to Mike Romano. The second piece would be to promote to acting sergeant Jacob Marini, effective January 8th, 2023. And the third piece would be to allow me to open a hiring process to backfill that vacancy that Mike left.
So moved on those three points.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Nevison?
Yes.
Pfizer?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just one item of good news from the police department. Big shout out to our K-9 officer Fitz and his handler.
Yep. So the handler is Jake.
Oh, perfect.
The guy who just promoted to acting sergeant. So, yeah, he did a great job today. It's pretty cool.
I don't know if anybody saw that or not, but...
No.
Do you want to share with us?
Looked like he was inadvertently called into it.
Yeah, so he was, he was doing his weekly training that he has to do with the dog, and he was with a bunch of troopers over in North Hampton. Holyoke Police had a pursuit. When the pursuit ended, the occupants of the vehicle took off running, and the Holyoke officers located a firearm in the vehicle. Fitz and Jake happened to be the closest K-9 unit, so they called for a K-9. He went down to Holyoke. He was able to track the, where the individuals ran and didn't actually find the suspects at that point, but located four more firearms that were hidden in the woods. So they had a total, they found a total of six guns, got a total of six illegal firearms off the street, thanks to the dog's nose.
Nice.
That's great.
Good work.
It's nice on the job training.
Right? Yeah. So it's worth paying the overtime today, at least.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's, and as far as the stuff with the Econo Lodge goes, I'm happy to talk with her at any point, but I've spoken with her several different times. The Econo, or the hotel situation with homeless, you know, folks living in there is a completely different animal, for, at least for us, than something like the Knights Inn, right? It's more of a motel setting. People can come outside in the parking lot. That's when things get weird for us. When they're in rooms and it's a nice, like, hotel-type setting, very different. And call volume will go up, but it's not that it's not manageable for us. I can't speak for the fire chief, don't know what he's going to say, but we will deal with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Welcome back, John. We just put everything on hold when you disappeared.
I apologize about that. I don't know what happened. I just got kicked out.
Is it possible to...
Are you there?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Is it possible to put this on mute? He's in charge of this, I'm not. I used to be.
John?
Keep an eye on John.
Yes, can you, can you guys hear me?
I can't hear him. Can you say something, John?
Yes, I'm, can anyone else hear me?
Not hearing you.
So they can hear him at home.
Yeah, I hear you.
It's just we can't hear him.
Yep, we can hear him at home.
All right, Haley, he disappeared early in your talk. Will you start again, please?
We can't hear Haley either.
Yeah, I love repeating myself.
Sorry about that, Haley.
That's okay, John. I just wanted to let you know that...
Hey, Scott, just hold tight.
Should I continue?
No.
Okay.
How much feedback do you get if I just unused my computer?
Don't do it.
I have a different suggestion. Why don't we give contact information to Haley and to John and have them talk?
Yeah, and I'll be talking with John.
Okay.
But do you have any other suggestions of anybody else you would like on that?
Well, Mark Dunn offered.
Yep, anybody else?
Not immediately.
No, the only thing I can think is if there's anybody, you know, maybe a resident of Golden Corridor, you know, somebody who...
Anybody in town that's interested?
One thought I had, I haven't been doing, I've done these studies before, oftentimes the rec director is person rec because it's not just the buildings themselves, it's the town-owned property, you know, outdoors.
Oh, that's a good point.
Making sure they're accessible, so it might be worth having Greg sit on it.
Maybe Greg, yeah.
Okay, if he's willing. All right, John and Haley, we're going to give your information to each other, and you can contact outside of this meeting. And thank you both for being here.
If I turn the speakers on here, you guys will have no video.
Say that again?
Sure.
Okay.
She's trying to get noise and no picture, so that we can, they can talk.
Does this thing stop working for this?
That's actually okay.
Okay, that, it's really, we're at the end of the meeting because number 5/5, the Hadley Business Council Formation, has been postponed. So we have an administrator's report, and that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
So Amy, the, I put a town administrator's update on Board Docs, but I also gave everyone here a hard copy because we're literally just looking at this today. But it's, it's kind of going to be a rolling document I'll keep updated. But I know that sometimes you guys are asked what, what projects are happening, what's the progress, what are the challenges? So I've highlighted in here a combination of projects that have been going on for a while, such as the fiber update. I've gotten some really good, just, just up to date on where certain departments are, such as DPW. Chief Spankable has been overseeing the fiber update, as well as water and sewer. This is not exhaustive, but it was, you know, close to four pages, so I thought I'd, you know, continue to keep, keep it updated. I did want to just highlight a couple things. The, I did attend an electric vehicle webinar, which was very interesting. It does look like there's going to be funding coming down the road to help pay for charging stations and design, you know, where, where they should be placed, but that, that's down the road, and those, those funding options haven't been announced yet, but there was some good discussion about that.
And that's out in the community, not just for municipal use?
It's going to be both. One of the things they focused on actually was on the highway, on how, because you have to have them pretty close together. So there's a real focus there, there's a focus on municipalities, and then there's how to work with residents. So it's kind of had a few parts to it. So I'll keep you updated about that. The Classification and Compensation Plan, that RFQ, we only got one response, so I am going to reach out one-on-one with a couple consultants to see what the challenges were. Some of it was timing. We did hear from one, but they just couldn't do it within the date that we had posted. So we canceled that bid, and I am going to do some, share the scope of work and reach out personally with some of these. And we're able to do that with this. A nice thing that's happened is just a group of Western Mass town administrators are getting together every other month for lunch and just sharing ideas, challenges within their community, and sharing their knowledge. So that has been really nice. The budget in the annual town meeting, just a reminder that it's May 4th, you guys will be opening the warrant at the next select board meeting, and we've already gotten most of the budget requests back, and we will be setting up a schedule to meet with, Linda and I will be meeting with all the department heads. I did, you heard Haley talk about the age and dementia-friendly Hadley Assessment and Action Plan I gave you, she did leave a copy for all of you, because she is going to be talking about that at the January 18th select board meeting, and she thought it would be helpful for you guys to have that ahead of time. There's also a, you've got the hard copy, but it's also in Board Docs. The ambulance, an update with the ambulance, and again, I'm not trying to go over everything, but things that I think the community would like to know. The ambulance will be, is planning to be up and running by May, but we did, the EMS coordinator is preparing a training plan, there's state inspections, there's certain certifications that need to get done, as well as just right now, just getting it painted with a lettering on it. So we're looking forward to that. Let's see, there's just a list of other grants and projects that are going on, and I think, I think that's all I'm going to go over right now, but I certainly can, that'll give you an opportunity to see it on paper, and if anyone has any questions. Most, oh, most importantly, the Silver Jackets, Massachusetts Silver Jackets, what I've talked to you about, who was focused on education for flood risk, has, we finally, I have, we are meeting on January 9th with several stakeholders, MEMA, FEMA, a lot of those entities. And so I've explained with the scope of work for that. I can go into more detail if you need more information on that, but it is, it's actually, I'm very excited about it. It's going to focus on education and communication, which we really, really need. So that, as, just a reminder, the levy assessment that we've been doing with Rich Niles from Western Sampson, this will, this is part of it, and it's just one more baby step to certification several years down the road with the Dyke and the levy, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Carolyn?
No, we could just reach out directly, if we...
What'd you say?
I said, we could just reach out to you directly.
Absolutely, absolutely. I will be, just, I'm not sure I mentioned it to the whole group, but I will be out of the office from tomorrow till next Wednesday. Grandchildren are home. But I can be reached, so not a problem.
Yeah, no, I can wait.
No, no.
Are there any select board items for future discussion?
I have an interesting issue that has come up with someone trying to sell a house on Birch Meadow Road. And the road is, it's probably 20 or 25 years old, and it's never been accepted by the town. And so this person's selling their house, the buyer's attorney finds out that it's not been accepted, so there's some pushback, which I completely understand. The reason I'm saying this is we need to figure out with us and probably the planning board, how to deal with these types of situations. I mean, this one is very extraordinary in that developer walked away from it. But we have other streets in town where the developers are still around, and houses are being built, and the roads aren't accepted. And technically, the town's not supposed to do anything with plowing and maintenance until they're accepted, but that's not what's happened, and I get it. I don't have a real issue with that. People pay taxes, they ought to be entitled to services, but this, this particular situation just brought up a real red flag on, on stuff like that, and it's not fair to the people that live on the street. If something major comes up, the town's not going to take care of it, and there, I'm sure everybody assumes that it's a town road, and they don't have to worry about it. So we should figure out how to rectify that.
Yeah, that's probably a legal issue about, we can't just take it if the developer walked away and is technically the owner and not...
Well, maybe the future...
Scott, are you still there?
So what I would say, since this is not on the agenda, I'll get the right players.
Yeah.
And would you like that in the very near future, like January 4th or 18?
Yes, yes, please.
Carolyn, just so you know, there's some history on this that maybe I can relate to.
That'd be great.
And we would definitely want at least one member of the planning board present in that discussion.
Definitely.
Yes.
Okay.
The 4th or the 18th?
4th.
4th, okay. And I just wanted to bring up, so I think last time I mentioned, so there were four things that have come up at previous meetings, and I think some of them may be coming up soon, but I'm not sure if others are. So if we could just go back and readdress, one of the priorities we identified at, I think, a meeting in early June, was we wanted to talk about how to improve communications with the community in general, something that I think Amy, Amy and I both brought up as a, as a topic for discussion, and we haven't really addressed that. We also talked about reviewing the roles and responsibilities, specifically in the select board and the town administrator, just because it looked like there were places where there seemed to be some conflict in different manuals that are out there, so we wanted to make sure that we're clear on that. The town administrator goals, and I think, I think that might be in January, right?
January 4th.
Yeah, and then the performance review, we had talked about that, and then I think it was left with Jen, we were talking about a process. She was talking about 360-degree, and I haven't heard anything about that since either, so...
Yeah, we've been working on it, trying, working with other town administrators to get some examples back, so she does have some examples. Is there a priority list on how you want those? You don't want to obviously do those all at one meeting, but is there one that's standing out?
Well, you're doing your goals on the 4th.
I'm doing it on the 4th.
And I think the 4th is pretty full. We should go to the 18th.
Yeah, and it would lead into the evaluation.
We'll put all of these on there, and we'll have conversations about them and get them focused.
Well, I'm wondering if I can put my goals and...
Jen's...
And have the performance review and the SWAT and, I'm sorry, not the SWAT and Alice, the 360. We, we do, we definitely have a 360. I think the evaluation, I think we had gone back and forth with a couple documents, and I think we've settled on one that's very...
So you'll present the process at the same meeting with the goal set?
Yeah, I'm going to do some research on that because it's, it can, it's definitely a few meetings, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, but get it started, that's good.
So I'm going to add the process of the 360 evaluation to the town, to your goals and achievements that you presented. I'll, I'll help with the agenda, because the 360 is separate from the evaluation. So, yeah, we'll, we'll word it. We do magic when we're, when we're doing those agenda items. I know, but I'm sorry for publicly, but she's supposed to be off tomorrow. That's why I was trying to get it all right here right now. But, okay, I'll talk to you after, I'm sorry.
Anything else? Amy, anything from you?
We can't hear her.
No, you can't.
Oh, can?
Thumbs up? Oh, hey, I hear you.
Oh, you can hear. Okay.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Nevison?
Yes.
Pfizer?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.